Good evening, everybody. I hope everybody's well this evening. Please can I welcome you all to this meeting of scrutiny. The time is 6pm. This meeting is being held under the regulations which came into effect on the 4th of April 2020 in response to the Covid situation. My name is councillor Caroline Brook, chairperson of the scrutiny committee. There are a few housekeeping reminders to run through as there are new working practices in response to the regulations. First of all, please can I ask everyone present in this virtual meeting that your microphones remain muted and your camera is turned off whilst you are not addressing the meeting? This will reduce background noise and avoid any unintentional disturbances. Please can I also advise that the open parts of the meeting are being audio recorded and livestreamed from the council's website. In addition, a video recording of the meeting will be uploaded to the council's YouTube channel after the meeting. Members and officers, where appropriate for each item, please use the chat function, understandably that there are people in the meeting who are unable to do that and that's already been addressed in advance of the meeting. But otherwise, please use the chat function to indicate that you wish to speak or raise a point of order or explanation and I will invite you to then speak at the appropriate time. Each member will be invited to speak in turn, therefore I would encourage all members to keep their contributions clear and concise as possible, please. When speaking or referring to the agenda papers, please make sure that you reference the page or paragraph number. Thank you. Please note, the duration of this virtual meeting is planned to be two hours. We have a smaller agenda today, so it may well not go on that long. But finally, if members wish to leave the meeting at any point during the meeting, please could they indicate that and make it known to me through the chat function or by raising a hand and I will announce the meeting that you want to leave the meeting. Please can I ask a democratic services officer to undertake a roll call of members of scrutiny to confirm who is present this evening? Matthew, please can I pass over to you?
Thank you Chair. Good evening, members. If you wouldn't mind unmuting, I'll just do a quick roll call of members. If members could just confirm that they're present in the meeting. Councillor Brook?
Yes, I'm here and present, Matthew.
Councillor Becker?
Yes, I'm here. Hi, Matthew.
Hi, councillor Bronk?
Good evening, yes, I'm here.
Councillor Crask?
Good evening, present.
Councillor Hiscock? Councillor Hiscock?
Yes, I'm here. So, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yeah, can, thank you. Councillor Horle?
Yes, good evening. I'm here and present.
Councillor Lumby?
Yes, him, I'm here.
Councillor Power?
Hi, Matthew. Yes, I'm here, thank you.
Hi, councillor Scott?
Yeah, thanks.
And councillor Weir?
I'm here, present.
Thank you, members. Chair, that's all members of the committee present. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Could I also ask you to reconfirm that you're present this evening?
Yes, thank you Chair. So, we have Nancy Graham in democratic services, Simon Howson and Richard Botham on the call this evening. Laura Taylor, Chief Executive, will be joining us shortly, Chair, hopefully, she had to take an urgent call. And in addition, Chair, just other members present in the meeting. So I've noted we've got councillor Cleer, councillor Todd and councillor Cutler on the call as well. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Matthew. So moving on to the agenda items. Agenda item one, apologies and deputy members. I understand that there are no apologies received this evening other than from the chief exec who is running late and will be joining us later. Can I ask members to indicate in the chat if they need to declare any interest under the declarations of interest?
Sorry Chair, you're on mute at that point, but I think you're calling councillor Hiscock.
Sorry, yes, I needed to declare that I have a non pecuniary interest. Personal non pecuniary interest in that I'm a county councillor and some of the issues that may be discussed this evening may have some bearing on my county council work. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hiscock. Are there any others, Matthew, that you could...
Councillor Scott, Chair.
Councillor Scott, please.
Thank you Chair. Yes, because I think pages from 21 downwards, there's a reference to the HRA and because I'm a council tenant, I like to declare that lovely fact. Thanks.
Thank you councillor Scott. I have no announcements to make this evening, so on to item four of the agenda, minutes of the meeting of the 7th of September. So this is on pages five to eight of the main agenda pack. If there are no comments, then I'd like to adopt the minutes. Does anybody have any comments to make? Then can I take this as a true record of the meeting?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Many thanks. On to item five, public participation. Matthew, I understand there are no requests been received from the public. Is that still the case?
That's still the case, Chair. Sorry Chair, you're on mute.
On to item six. We've got the work programme suggestions of mental health options in Winchester. Pages nine and 10. So I'd like to introduce this and then for us to debate this so that we can take this forward. So this is something that's close to my heart. Councillor Weir, who's on the call, and councillor Cleer, who are on the call. As the scrutiny chairs, we all had a meeting regarding this to agree to take this forward from all of the scrutiny groups. You can see councillor Weir kindly put together a draft of this, which I've edited and is what you see before you. So with regards to this paper, since we've put through this, I've also done some research and attended webinars on the collaboration between the NHS and local councils. And I've seen many incidences of this, including the Nottingham City Housing Campaign, where they estimate that for every pound invested in the collaboration and sharing resources, they actually save somewhere in the region of £7.50 collaborating on things such as ensuring that there is adequate housing. And there was also a research study done that indicated that 31% of adults across Britain said that poor housing affected their health and mental health. So there's an article out here. I will talk more about it as we go through the discussion. But firstly, I'd like to open it up to the group. Does anybody have anything they'd like to say about this paper to start things off? Matthew, I'm relying on you.
Councillor Power?
Thank you, thank you Chairman. I understand the gearing of doing this work. However, I have a concern about to what extent we can actually influence outcomes as a result of doing this work. And I'm not sure that's clear from the paper?
Thank you councillor Power. Does anybody else have any debate they'd like to put regarding this proposal? Matthew, are you seeing anybody?
I'm not seeing anything Chair, no. Oh councillor Hiscock?
Councillor Hiscock, please.
Thank you Chair. I think there is some work going on in the county, sorry, in the city council with regard to mental health and work particularly with tenants, where the housing department, I think, are doing a fair bit, I hope they're doing a fair bit, of work with our tenants who are at risk and are suffering from the various deprivations caused by the current lockdown and all of the financial and other problems that this is causing. So I think there is a relevance to the city council. We also have our own staff, many of which really would appreciate, I'm sure, having some sort of support from the city council. Whether or not it means that we can look at the whole range of facilities that are available within the district is probably a moot point, but I think it does mean that we become more conscious of what we can do and more aware of some of the issues that are going on with people with regards to their mental wellbeing. So I think there is some scope for work on this right now. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hiscock. Sorry, Matthew.
No, sorry, apologies. We've got councillor Lumby, Horle and Becker.
Councillor Lumby, please.
Thank you Chair. Thank you for the paper. I noticed that the paper, whilst referring to the whole district, doesn't look to make any distinction or see whether there are any distinctions made between rural and urban areas. And it will be interesting to explore whether there are any shortfalls in either of those two or particular issues that arise in either of them. Because we are aware that out in the countryside, there are issues that very much arise that perhaps aren't so apparent in the countryside, in the towns. And access to help can be difficult. Let's not go into examples now, but we can touch on those if that would be useful. So I think it would be helpful if the paper could look into and explore whether there are any distinctions between rural and urban areas and lessons to be learnt in relation to that. Thank you.
Councillor Horle, please. Thank you councillor Lumby.
I'm happy to go councillor Brook, but in fact councillor Scott was ahead of me in requesting to speak.
Councillor Scott then, please.
I feel honoured. Thank you very much. Mental health is a big issue with a lot of our tenants at this moment in time. And I just think in just Covid has really shown its real ugly head. And it's really sort of expanded the sort of situation that sometimes people have been vulnerable in our communities. And we've known for many, many years, the likes of Stammel, Wendell and such have deprivation figures that don't stack up very well, being that we are in Winchester. And sometimes over the years, you know, it just sometimes can be, not consciously, but sometimes overlooked as communities. And people are suffering within our communities. And I think if a paper looked at aspects of young people and their mental health. I know schools go a long way to try and achieve getting alongside their pupils, something maybe we could tap into there. I know that university students have also found it a real struggle with their mental health this year. And what a strange year they've had at university. And I know our older generation, when they can't go to their coffee mornings and their bingo clubs and stuff like that, and they've had less contact with their families, have also found it very, very hard. And they love a phone call, they love a distant tap on the door. Any form of contact has been brilliant because they've literally just had their life turn upside down when they literally look for the Wednesday coffee mornings or the Tuesday bingo clubs or whatever. So I think this paper could actually be a very good forerunner. Whether it all sits with the city council, no, it probably wouldn't. There'd be aspects of health there, there'd be aspects of county council there, adult services and youth organisations. But it would be good to actually have the city council to maybe bring these organisations and agencies together to talk about this complex issue that our residents are suffering out there. And that's a good acknowledgement that the city council can do a good paper and conversations on this matter. Thanks Chair.
Thank you councillor Scott. And absolutely what you're saying. So my intention behind this paper is not for us to do it in isolation, although as I said, I've done some research and some things we can specifically do as a council to support this, but is to open up that conversation and the collaboration between our health services, between Hampshire County Council, the district and borough councils of the area, perhaps some of the support groups and counselling organisations that we have out there. So thank you. It's absolutely to open up that conversation. Councillor Horle?
Thank you Chair. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. I welcome the initiative this evening and thank you to yourself councillor Cleer and Weir for putting this before us all this evening. I think the first thing I would say is working in partnership is clearly the important approach to this. We've experienced that in a recent example when we've been talking about rough sleeping and homelessness and working alongside the charity and voluntary organisations that we're blessed with in the city. And this is a great example again, where we need to hold hands with other organisations who touch on this area. So working in partnership is absolutely the way to go forward and to support everyone most effectively. Secondly, I think Covid has obviously brought a state of anxiety and some very different scenarios and some difficult scenarios for people to cope with in the last few months and continue to do so. And so I think it is our duty, given the council plan, to make sure that we are looking to the health and wellbeing of our residents. And with the opening of the new sport and leisure park, I'm hoping that we might be able to initiate some support services that might find themselves a home there and a good location from which to promote that health and wellbeing piece. And also in support of some of the comments already made, I would like to ensure that we link up obviously with our housing officers and the good work that they're doing with our tenants and to make sure that again, we're linking, working in partnership and using that knowledge and experience to everyone's best advantage. Perhaps historically, mental health and wellbeing has not been one of those things that's had the profile it should have done. And I think this is a great opportunity for us to reach out to all residents in the district and indicate the efforts that we could all make together on this. Thank you Chair.
Absolutely councillor Horle, and thank you for your support and for the ideas regarding health and leisure. There's a great base for some of the support services. That's a really good idea. Councillor Becker?
Thanks. Oh, I think you're only seeing the top of my head. There we go. Thanks Chair, thanks for the opportunity to speak. I completely agree. I think this is a great initiative. It's an important initiative. The work that's been done through the vision for Winchester, being led by the town forum that was set out at our meeting last night, I think, illustrates that collaborative working really is the way of the future and this highlights that moving forward in a different area of work and across the district, not just within the town. As councillor Scott has said though, if access is limited at the moment to private providers, then that excludes a lot of our community. So we really do need to know what is out there, what are the gaps in free services and see what we can do with our partners to fill those or to point people to the right services that are the right services for them and their situation. I did have a question though. There's a comment in here about largely unregulated independent practitioners with a check in square brackets. I just wanted to understand what was being referred to in that. Because often these will be regulated in some form as professionals. So I just wanted to know what that reference was to. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Becker. So working within this area quite a lot, I do know what's out there and I'll come back to the moment, but your query regarding largely unregulated. People who have gone to college and done a counselling qualification can set themselves up as councillors, as private councillors, charging 40 plus pounds an hour. And they are largely unregulated. There are bodies that you can report them to for malpractice and the like. But the reality is that anybody who's done that qualification can set themselves up as a councillor or private practice. So as somebody that refers people to mental health support quite often, there are times where you really don't know what you're referring people to if they go to somewhere private. Some of the, I've heard horror stories of somebody who went along to a councillor who was really suffering with body dysmorphia. And it was a female and the councillor was male and in an attempt to boost her ego significantly, had made lots of overly flattering comments, which to somebody who's quite vulnerable was entirely inappropriate and led to further problems down the line. So that's the kind of situations that can cause and make things worse because they are private practices. With regard to what's already out there, within Hampshire, we have, well, within southern Hampshire, we have ITALK, who are based in Southampton and they are a cognitive behavioural therapy group. And so that is a specific type of counselling and it's brilliant for some types of issues, but it's not great for others. There's no specific talking therapies out there unless you want group support via Mind, who are also available. And I'll caveat that with unless you are a veteran who is struggling, in which case there's all sorts of veterans counselling services. If you have something specific like autism, there's Autism Hampshire. If you have specific long-term illnesses, we all know of cancer support such as Macmillan and things. So if you have a specific something, there is additional support out there for you. But if you're just somebody that has no specific disease, doesn't have a background with veteran army or the forces at all, and you're just an everyday person knowing about the lines, who's really struggling at the moment with some sort of depression or mental health, there is limited capacity. And ITALK and Mind take the lower level. And the higher level cases go to the adult mental health team. But that's the team who support that I am in crisis, I am seriously contemplating suicide and I already know how I'm going to do it. So there is a gap in between there. You have areas like Bristol and Somerset who have specific NHS free phone number for mental health. And there are other council areas who have other types of counselling therapies available to people on the NHS or via their councils, probably more the unitary ones or the second tier, it comes under the remit more of the higher tier. But so there are therapies out there, but that gap in between, there has been some progress made actually since the writing of this paper in that ITALK and the adult mental health team do talk about their cases when referring them to each other. But if there's no service in that gap in between, they might, for example, if it was bereavement, send them out to a bereavement charity or some such. But that is then where their input stops and you don't know the quality of the counselling that they're getting because it's outside of the system, so to speak. So that was the place where this came from. Do we have any other questions or debate, Matthew, at the moment?
Thank you Chair. Yeah, we've got councillor Weir and councillor Crask.
Councillor Weir?
Thank you. Mine is debate, but we don't seem to be structuring this. So I just wanted to say that having, as a co-sponsor of this and Chair of the Business and Housing Committee, I think we're learning a lot from two groups who are already working on this. We've been directed to task and finish, to approach it in that way. And I would strongly recommend that as this develops, it looks to that form of work that may identify some early wins that the council can take and further work in the years ahead. I think it's really important that we, with the portfolio holders that we've referenced towards the end of this paper and as has already been mentioned, with the teams who work with them. I think this can make a strong contribution to the Covid recovery plan. But clearly in the coming months, there's going to be a lot of pressure on officers to the work that's already in the pipeline. So it may need to be part of a longer term plan. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Weir. Who did you say we had? Matthew, next?
Councillor Crask, Chair.
One moment councillor Crask, welcome to you. I've just seen Laura Taylor's face pop up, so welcome to the meeting Laura. Councillor Crask?
Thanks Chair, thanks all. I can't add anything to how important this is or the priority right now or the breadth of people needing this. It's all been very well covered. And I think we're very fortunate to have a group of councillors that are so experienced and so passionate about this. I'm sure we can make a big difference with this. Who knows where this could go? And I think the point's been made in terms of it's going to be a large outcome probably with lots of stakeholders involved. But I think the question for me is, is there something specific around the support that is needed for officers? And probably useful that Laura stepped in right now in terms of what are we doing to support officers or what is the plan to support officers? And maybe councillors as well. I know we're probably not the most important or vulnerable group in the community, but something in terms of officers and support for councillors as well. So a specific question there in terms of a specific outcome. Thank you.
Councillor Brook, would you like me to respond?
Yes, please, happily.
Thank you. And my apologies for being late members. I was on a different call that I couldn't avoid. So my apologies and to you Chairman. Certainly, I think the scope of this group is both to look internally and externally as to the work that the council can collaborate in with respect to supporting strong mental health. And we do take a very positive attitude towards supporting our staff. And we were going to propose that at least one of the sessions of this task and finish group explored that in more detail. For instance, we have mental health first aiders here at the council. We provide a series of support links. We have a counselling service that staff can speak to. And we also try to do work through more general communications, which just encourage staff to have breaks, participate in yoga, for instance, we offer that at the council. And during the last year, we undertook a survey of everyone's, it was actually of their physical health, of their blood pressure and age and whatever. But within that, there was a mental health element in that. So we take a very holistic view. And one of our HR team, Jamie Khan, leads on that for us. So I'm sure he would be more than happy to come and speak to the task and finisher group about our internal support for officers. And just at the moment, of course, we are very conscious that officers and, well, all of us are at home and are in very difficult circumstances and maybe juggling very different priorities as well as undertaking our day-to-day work. So we are ensuring that there are regular team meetings, there are coffee catch-ups, just as you would if you're in the office, you'd have a cup of coffee with someone. So we're asking teams to meet informally. We've done a survey of our staff to understand where any pressure points are that we can help with. So we have a good foundation which we played in anyway and we are building that more over these months while folk are at home more than they are in the office. And I would just say in conclusion that we obviously tried to bring more folk back into the office during the, when we had a brief lull in the national restrictions and the response to that was overwhelming. Just to enable folk to come in like one day a week and have a conversation with colleagues instead of it all being via teams, just played in so positively to people's wellbeing. So we're unable to do that at the moment, members, you know that. But we know that our teams are keen to come back just to have that little piece of interaction with colleagues. And of course, members, last week on our bulletin, we put out some advice to yourselves. We have a, we obviously want to try and support everyone that works with the council and there were some... And there were some links and tips for whether members wish to seek some advice on their own personal circumstances or their own mental health, put out in last week's DSU. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Laura. Laura, while you are now here, I referred earlier to you that I've done some research on this. So my initial thoughts around this was that Winchester as a council could influence the conversation on this. And certainly start being fundamental in the right parties talking and collaboration with this. But since then, I've also attended today a webinar on housing and mental and physical health. I've also been doing a little bit of research about some of the collaborations up there. So Laura, I just wanted to hear your thoughts, if I may. I understand that this is all new to you. But there's things internally, as well as initiating this conversation, that perhaps we as a council could do. For example, people are struggling because of digital exclusion. I know that that is primarily falls under county. But for example, we're coming across an awful lot of potentially people who need support from mental health services as a council. For example, when they're coming to pay their council tax and where they phone because they've got rent arrears. And they've got rent arrears because they've not currently got employment. And the stresses, anxieties and mental health problems that that causes. So maybe we could be more aware of that and guide that towards the conversation. As I mentioned earlier before you arrived, it was estimated on a, the project that they did up in Nottingham, the Nottingham Housing Project, that for every one pound invested in collaborating and they invested something like £121,000 between the NHS and the councils. For every one pound, they reckon that there was a £7.50 saving across the whole health and care sector. So of course, that could be ploughed into funding better and more services. So if we can get into those early by spotting them, for those on the frontline who are speaking to these people who are going out to our housing tenants, et cetera, that would be great. So I think that's, in my thoughts, that's a quick win that wouldn't take a huge amount more extra time. And of course, it's never been so important as now. So just a reminder in the local plan piece that we really need to factor that in as a big deal. And there's other examples of collaborative working with, there's a Newham paper. Cumbria did a collaborative working piece tackling governance challenges in practice. And Leicester also did a project called the Lightbulb Project. So just some little bits of research that I just wanted to reflect to hear, if I may. Thank you.
Yes, do you wish me to comment yet, Chairman? Or I can see that there are some other members with hands up at the moment, but I'm very happy to build on the points you've made in due course.
Happily. Matthew, who's next to speak?
Councillor Porter, Chair.
Councillor Porter, please.
Thank you. I really welcome this and I've been looking at, you've mentioned about digital exclusion, but actually many people find a digital service also very helpful. And I've been looking at Big White Wall, which is now part of the NHS's Together All, which you can take part in and subscribe to as a local authority, as well as being in the forces or whatever. And it gives the public a free access to 24/7 mental health support. I'm really interested in that as a possibility. But also you'll be interested to know that we are tackling specific challenges for mental health. The challenge of hoarding mentally and physically needs support. And the city council has started work on that. And we started just before the pandemic, but we're just about to pick it back up again, our service. And so that's another piece of work that's being done at the moment. But I'm very happy to take part in this. I think it would be a really positive view of what the city council can do for its residents directly.
Thank you, councillor Porter. Matthew, who have we got next?
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Weir did have a hand up at one point, but it's gone down again now. So I don't know whether that was a technical.
I don't have anything to add there. I was going to pick up on the digital comments, but I don't think I need to. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Weir. Any further comments?
There's nothing further indicated, Chair.
Okay. Could I come back to you then, Laura, just if you have any initial thoughts on what I've said? Obviously, I expect it to be initial thoughts because I'm aware of just.
Of course, of course.
Sorry, sorry, Chair. Councillor Clear has just indicated the request.
One moment councillor Clear, I'll come to you. I'll just allow Laura to speak.
Of course. Thank you. Thank you councillor Clear. I think you make a very interesting point there because this is a system-wide issue. And the city council is one player in this piece here. And there are numerous other statutory agencies and voluntary sector that's supporting here. And certainly we do provide some support to our tenants that come in. But we have a close relationship with our tenants and we do provide some elements of support there. So I suppose I would propose in the first instance, that there's the piece which is around which you are clearly interested in. In what do we do internally? So we have a workforce that is fit and agile and able to support our residents' businesses. That's why we support our staff. That there's some input there and some exploration around what our tenancy team do to support our most vulnerable residents and those that might have the most complex needs. You made a very interesting point there around green space and the positive benefits that natural capital can make to people's wellbeing. And just enabling people to go out and take those few minutes out and clear their mind. So indeed, that's another element to draw into our plans. And the examples you gave there were clearly larger councils and in a different tier to the city council. But I suppose I would propose that we did two things. First of all, we had a look to see what that best practice was around the country and see who the players were in that. We can certainly undertake that piece of work. And we also should do the piece of work around what's our local landscape? Who are the agencies that are in play and support for this? And we could undertake both of those two pieces of work in precursor, really. We can have a discussion with you in the first meeting, but to do that. Because we're aware, of course, there's a statutory model around this, which is through the County Health and Wellbeing Board. And I understand that they're receiving a paper in December around mental health support. So we would want to play into that. So we need to find our place in the landscape and see where we've got some leverage and can make positive improvements for our communities. So I think if we do those two pieces of scoping and we also give you some input from our staffing team around what we do internally, what we do to support our residents, what we do around health and wellbeing. I think that would give the task and finish group lots of evidence and avenues to explore to see then what we can realistically influence as the city council. I wonder how that sounds councillor.
That sounds brilliant. That sounds exactly what we need. Thank you, Laura. Councillor Clear.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Brooke, I'm sorry I clicked in a bit late, but well done because this is a very, very important issue. I welcome this, I really do. And I know it's coming to Health and Environment Committee, but at a bit of a later date. But I will be keeping an eye on it and updating it. I agree with councillor Lumby when he said distinctions, explored distinctions between urban and rural areas. That's a very good point, I thought. But the most important issue is to talk and work in partnership to help all those that need us and work together. And I look forward for the Health and Environment to look into this. So well done. Very good initiative. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Clear. Do we have any further comments, Matthew? Has anybody else come forward?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Councillor Clear, thank you very much for that. At HEP next week or so, you have a briefing on our arrangements for health partnerships. So I think it's an aligned piece of work to see how the two structure together. So I think between councillor Clear's committee and your committee here, councillor Brooke, we can tackle this from two different angles. As I apologised, I was on a different call, so I was slightly late. But I think I did hear councillor Weir just recognise that, of course, all our efforts at the moment are getting our district safely to Christmas with the tier announcement. So we just need to be mindful how we schedule this work and the pace at which we can deliver it that's best for our district and make sure that we can deliver everything else that we're meant to be doing. But certainly very happy to take this forward. And we've got a few of officers already who are prepared to do some work on it, which is really good.
Fabulous. Thank you very much. Matthew, was there anything else from anybody in the chat?
Nothing that I can see, Chair, no.
Okay, wonderful. So it's already been mentioned previously this evening about this being done via a task and finish group. So I'd like to discuss with members about how we feel that we take that forward, which members are most appropriate. Do we have any volunteers? How many members do we think that should be? And then, of course, at the first meeting, spending some time looking at the terms of reference, time scales and things. So as Laura's going, we do need to be clear about the time scales versus the officer time. So I'll throw that out. How many members do we feel that would be appropriate to be on the task and finish group? And who would like to be part of that? I'd like to state that I would like to be part of it as an initiative.
Councillor Weir, Chair.
Councillor Weir.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to share with you. So on the two task and finish groups again that we've got running at the moment with the Business and Housing Policy Group, we've set up a small steering group for each of them, which I think is working very well. So it's a three-person steering group on each. Officers brought to the committee a detailed work programme and we've helped to fill out those programmes, but then handed it back to officers who've taken ownership and are really running forward with it. So I would commend that approach to you. It seems to be working well for us. Thank you.
Many thanks councillor Weir. I agree, three or five should be the right number. So does everybody agree with three or five? Three? Say agreed if you agree. So three?
Agreed.
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 Great. Any takers for five?
I just wondered, Chair, whether you ought to see how many people are interested in taking part? Because if there are five enthusiasts, you may want to go with five. If you're struggling to round up three, then maybe a lower odd number would be appropriate.
Okay. Okay, if you could raise your hands if you'd be interested in being part of the task and finish group, that might be really useful. So we've got councillor Becker, Matthew and I. Okay, it's going to be three then.
Sorry, Chair, I didn't mean to put my hand.
Matthew was a bit rushed there, I think. Matthew was prepared to help.
Do we have any other members who'd like to be part of this? Maybe you'd like to think about it?
Councillor Brooke, I would recommend you throw it out to the council membership because there may be expertise out there that we're not tapping into in this group. I would suggest to do that.
Okay, I'll do that. Okay, so I think that's about wraps that up. So we'll have a small task and finish group. The points I've taken away from this that I will communicate out are what impact can we have? So councillor Power, you made that. I think, I hope that I've articulated some of that. But absolutely, we need to consider that as part of the terms of reference. Urban versus rural rule, councillor Lumby, I absolutely take that as a point. My experience of it so far is that there is very little difference there, but that's not to say there isn't. That's probably a bigger piece of work. Councillor Scott, I take on board your piece about aspects of young people and mental health versus the elderly and their differing needs and the like. Councillor Horle, I certainly take away your suggestion of the health and leisure support services. And I thank the other councillors for their support on this. Does anybody else have any other comments before I close this item? Councillor Bell, unmuted. Did you wish to speak?
No, I'm sorry, Chairman, that was sheer carelessness.
Okay.
Nothing else indicated, Chair, that I can see.
Thank you all for your participation in this discussion. It's much appreciated in shaping this as a piece of work, which I think is very vital for members of our district and I thank you all for your support. Right, so moving on to item number seven, we have the verbal update from councillor Hall as Chair of the Performance Panel. So over to you councillor Hall. It's on pages 11 and 12 of the agenda pack.
Thank you, Chair. Yes. So as you know, Chair, we've been established to look at the quarterly reports in more detail. We're spending two hours looking through that and then reviewing any particular items that come out of that each time. Last time, we were unfortunately doing the meeting post the York Committee. But this time, we were able to hold our meeting in advance. And so on pages 11 and 12 of the agenda pack, you have the various issues that we discussed. Clearly some orientation towards Covid recovery and obviously the sort of evolving situation and particularly in the context of the economy. We were very conscious not to try and overlap questions and issues with the other policy committees chaired by councillor Clear and councillor Weir. And so we're just navigating through that to make sure that we do not add incrementally to the work that we cover between us all. We make sure that the issues that are of most importance are addressed. We're trying to refine how we look at the questions from a process point of view and our sort of approach to this, but that is evolving. We're certainly keen to, where appropriate, look at particular areas in more detail. So next time, we're particularly asking if we can look at our position regarding flooding and the like and the measures that we're taking across the district in regard to that very important area, given some of the incidents that we've had in the last year or two. And we asked councillor Todd for a members briefing on the movement strategy because questions were coming up, but we thought it was an area important for everyone to understand right across the council. So I think the notes are self-explanatory. The officers are kindly running a sort of a reminder of actions of things that we've asked to review or follow up and actually those that we've closed off and those that are still outstanding. So we're trying to support you in actually doing the sort of more detailed work and then just bring any highlights to your committee chair in this summary document. Very happy to take any questions on behalf of the panel if there are any this evening. But obviously, some members of the committee are there and have been through all this collectively.
Thank you councillor Horle. Does anybody have any questions for councillor Horle and the committee at all?
We've got councillor Power and councillor Weir, Chair.
Councillor Power, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you very much. I'm going to apologise in advance. I have a little quibble with the notes of this meeting. Item 2.3 says that councillor Power asked if these could be made public. The most important part of that comment for me was that I felt these reports could be used by us to allow the public to hold us to account. And I asked that Mr. Howson look at how that could be done without increasing workload on officers and maybe have a performance area of our website, which can be found and allow us to refer people to it and say, look, this is what we're doing, Chairman. Thank you.
Yes, to support councillor Power, I know we were trying to make the accessibility and the understanding of the information as easy as possible without adding incrementally to the workload. So it was a, could we sort of have a segue of that data into the public domain that was meaningful and understandable? So we will follow up on that and we'll note that point councillor Power.
Mr. Howson, did you have any comments at this time or follow up later?
Thank you, Chair. Only really to add that it's a project that we've already.
Only really to add that it's a project that we've already started recognising the comment made by councillor Power, and that is to have a section of the council's website, so public facing, whereby we upload quarterly these reports for the public to be able to view them, as indeed you do members, and recognising the transparency of showing the monitoring against the council plan, the key performance indicators, as well as the highlight reports for our major projects. So it's in hand, it will hopefully be live in the next couple of weeks and we will continue to update that area of the website on a quarterly basis.
I'm grateful, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Weir, you wanted to comment?
Thank you, Chair. I've got four related points here. I am wondering why point one wasn't brought to the meeting, the scrutiny committee, after the first meeting of the Performance Panel? Why was it taken back to the Performance Panel? On point two, I think it really follows on from some of councillor Power's comments is, how is the scrutiny committee or indeed the public to understand these notes when we don't have sight of the papers to the panel? And on point 2.4 and point four, why is this not referred back to scrutiny now for work? Why is the panel taking this on as a piece of work? And on point three, where are the notes from the 14th of September meeting? Again, why was the concern about engagement then not referred back to scrutiny? Our meeting is script, this evening is very light on business. We have other meetings that are light on business. Surely we should be bringing them back and looking at them as a complete, as the full scrutiny panel? Thank you.
councillor Horle, Mr. Howson, did you want to address that?
Certainly, from a point of view of the papers, councillor Weir, I mean, they should all be available. So the Q1 report is obviously, I'm sorry, the quarterly reports would all narrowly be published broadly to all councillors. So if they haven't made their way to you, we need to understand why not, even though we're doing the detailed analysis. And any supplementary follow-up notes, that we were given some follow-up notes to the panel. So if that trail of information isn't making its way to all councillors and we just need to ask officers to make sure that that is the case, because all of that should clearly be accessible. An interesting point in terms of some of the issues that we've raised to make sure that they are picked up in the appropriate committees. And I take your point, maybe that's something, Mr. Howson, Mrs Kirkham, we can discuss, is to make sure that we're routing those questions back either to scrutiny or to a policy committee, whichever is appropriate, rather than just, as you say, back to the panel if we've raised those as areas of concern, interest or important relevance to the council. So maybe that's something we can follow up on, Mr. Howson, and is a fair point from councillor Weir.
Thank you councillor Horle. Were there any further comments on this? Or Matthew?
Nothing further indicated, Chair. Oh, councillor Weir again, Chair, sorry.
councillor Weir?
Thank you, Chair. Because there weren't any other comments, I hoped that we might be able to move into debate on this. I don't want to jump the gun. Was that where you were heading?
I was indeed going to head into debate, yes. Do you have debates then?
Well, I do indeed. And I welcome the councillor Horle's response to the questions that I raised. And I think it brings us back to the question about the lack of items on the agenda this evening. I think our agenda is very light. And I do, I'm getting, I'm concerned that the panel isn't really operating in the spirit of openness and transparency to which the council is committed. And what I'd like to suggest is that we consider revising its terms of reference and deleting items five and six in the terms of reference, so that when matters of real concern to the panel come up, they are automatically referred back to the committee. And furthermore, I'd like to add that we record that the public document pack is presented to the, that's presented to the Performance Panel, will be available to all council members prior to each meeting of the Performance Panel and as an appendix to the subsequent scrutiny committee meeting. And I'm hoping that the committee would agree to these changes. Thank you.
councillor Weir, for reference, when you were talking, you were really rustling your papers. So we, you were very broken up then, just for reference. So I'm aware that this is the second meeting. Councillor Weir, could you mute please? I'm aware that this is the second meeting of scrutiny panel, this sub-panel. So this is very much a teething, evolving process to perfect the way in which it's done. The scrutiny committee as a whole agreed on the way that this would happen going forwards. Mr. Howson, do you have any views or comments on what councillor Weir has proposed?
Thank you, Chair. You're right, the terms of reference for the Performance Panel came before you at your last meeting and those indeed were approved. It was unfortunate in the timings that the Performance Panel wasn't able to meet before the scrutiny and actually the notes at that time went direct to Cabinet. I think it's worth mentioning that the quarterly report and indeed the notes from the meeting, so from the Performance Panel after this evening, do go to Cabinet. So the quarterly report and the notes before you this evening will go to Cabinet on the 16th of December. That report will obviously be then in the public domain. But I take on board councillor Weir's comment of members having the opportunity to comment on the report before it comes to scrutiny. And that is something, as you say, we're looking at as we embed the Performance Panel and tweak some of it around some of the edges. But at the moment, we're certainly aware of that and in discussion.
It's my personal view that asking us all to comment on it sort of defeats the point of having the panel. Councillor Horle, do you have any thoughts?
Thank you, Chair. And I sort of refute the idea that we're not being open and transparent. As you rightly said, we're trying to evolve the process here. All of the papers are in the broader domain and last time, because of the timing, went to Cabinet. They should flow through. The officers have worked very hard now to generate a timetable that allows the report to be published for us to do some detailed analysis and for that information to flow through then to you in scrutiny and that we then save two hours of your agenda by having done that thorough analysis as a subgroup of the scrutiny committee on your behalf. All of those documents should flow through. And if they haven't made their way or through, or councillors haven't picked them up in other committees such as Cabinet, then we need to ensure that that is the case. And I've taken on board completely councillor Weir's point that if there are bigger issues, maybe they should be referred, if not to scrutiny, but to the policy committees and I think, or a briefing, which is what we agreed as a panel regarding the movement strategy. So we're trying to make this efficient and learning as we go and very happy to take on board some of the suggestions. And as I say, I commend officers for trying to map out a process for us that allows due diligence to be done on the information within the timeframe to meet other scheduled committee meetings of the council.
Absolutely. I also think that it's a crazy suggestion that when we have a lighter agenda, it reverts somehow back to discussion via the wider panel, because it has to be one process each time and we as a committee agreed to that process. But I thank councillor Weir for her comments nonetheless. councillor Hiscock, you raised a hand.
Chair, we've got councillor Power as well.
Yes, Chair. My concern here is that we are just going to set up a sort of big, not a big, a way of bypassing the normal scrutiny principles and the processes. I'm sure it's not intentional, but I'm not sure that when we decided that we were going to set up the Performance Panel, it was going to do the majority of the work with a smaller group of people. And it would be a concern that this was to continue to grow in importance and eventually overtake the value of the whole scrutiny committee itself. And I'm not saying it's happening now, but I think there is a danger and there's a watch out that we have to be concerned about here.
Thank you councillor Hiscock. I thank you for your comments. I was perfectly aware when I voted on this and to support it that it was going to be a smaller panel doing that detailed scrutiny work, because in order to scrutinise it properly for two hours, we would never be able to have anything else on our scrutiny agenda if that continued. Therefore, in order to give it proper scrutiny that it deserved, those members who had some knowledge and expertise in this area had volunteered to be part of this subgroup. So that was absolutely always the intention, that they would do that work. It would report back to us as a main committee and then we could pick up any comments and thoughts on that. So I'm not sure how that was unclear to you. councillor Lumby? Apologies councillor Power.
Sorry.
councillor Lumby. One moment, I skipped councillor Power inadvertently. councillor Power?
Thank you, Chairman. I have to agree with councillor Weir on this, Chairman. If you remember, we are as a scrutiny committee responsible for scrutinising the performance monitoring report. We rightly identified that we didn't have the time to do the deep dive in the scrutiny committee. But if during that performance monitoring meeting, we find areas on which we would like further information, I believe that that further information should come back to scrutiny, because this committee as a whole is responsible to councillor, to council, not just the people on the performance monitoring group. We need to maintain that chain of communication so that we as a scrutiny committee are responsible and accountable to council. I feel we need to sort out the plumbing on this to make sure where we say, this needs further work, please, further information, that information then comes back to scrutiny as a whole. And it's very important that it comes back to scrutiny, because the members of the performance monitoring group can explain why we felt it was necessary to have some more information on a particular aspect of our performance. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you councillor Power. I'm not sure what we're missing here, that this part here where we get to ask questions and have debates of this paper, surely that's what this process is for? But the detailed deep dive is done by the smaller panel and now here we are discussing what's been brought back to us and therefore the larger issues. We could also pick up and ask questions also. I'm not sure what's being missed here. councillor Lumby?
Thank you, Chair. I've taken the opportunity of councillor Power being ahead of me to find my mute or unmute button in this case, so thank you for that delay. I missed the original meeting when we set up the panel. I think the panel is an excellent idea to do the deep dive. I must admit, I thought the report, only in two pages long, was probably shorter than I thought it would be and that we might hear a bit more. Of course, it's absolutely right that we should be seeing all of the papers. And I think, I thought I saw that Matthew had sent those around this afternoon, which I think the point was that we want to see them much earlier. Thank you, Matthew, for flicking those on. It seems to be a bit early to be redoing at all, but I think it's well worth us noting our points and perhaps seeing where they want to come back to this the next time around after we've seen the next iteration. I certainly don't want to spend scrutiny meeting, we spend many, many hours in these, looking at every item. And I do think that actually with the amount of stuff that's in there, without the Performance Panel really looking at stuff in depth, we will actually not do the job properly at all and we will effectively not be scrutinising and failing. So I do think we need to keep going with it, give it a little longer to make it work. As a related point though, Chair, it is slightly surprising we have so little on our agenda today. Is there a reason why we don't have anything to scrutinise in the council? That seems a bit odd to me. There are surely things going on that we should be looking at on the, where have they all gone? Thank you.
I'm not sure of the answer to that councillor Lumby. I'm assuming that there is a good reason. Laura, would you like to?
Only to assist, only to assist councillor Brooke, I think it is merely a matter of timing. I think if we looked at the next two agendas of this committee, they are very full. We are just approaching budget time, you are having to dedicate some time for that. We have some work on our major projects that is coming through to this committee and I think it is just where we are tonight on this agenda. But we have established the meeting and put it into place for you to have a debate. So certainly the next two or three meetings are very busy because we're approaching budget time and some decisions on our major projects, which will flow through this committee first, of course. Thank you.
I would like to thank councillor Horle and the subcommittee who have gone thoroughly through this paper on our behalf and thank you to Mr. Howson and the officers who have supported that to make it so. Do we all note the paper this evening? Note the update?
Chair, sorry, sorry, Chair, before you move on, there was still councillor Weir and councillor Horle had indicated and also councillor Power.
Okay, councillor Weir has spoken twice. Did you really have another comment or was that accidental?
No, I was in debate, but I wanted to clarify, there seems to be a bit misunderstanding as to what I'm proposing here. I certainly not asking for us to go through the whole of the performance paper again. I was asking that we should have sight of it before this meeting so that we at least could relate the notes that were coming out of the meeting to what had been presented to you and at least make some sort of informed feedback. So that was my first question. My second point was, I'm very concerned that the panel is developing its own work programme and which will increasingly be a burden on officer time and that we should be bringing that, if there are issues that need a lot of work that are going to come up again. And I believe that in, for example, the Covid recovery and councillor Horle's already alluded to the flooding question, that these should be brought back to the scrutiny committee to take forward. I think we've more or less agreed on that, but I think it needs to be formalised, which is why I'm asking for items five and six in the terms of reference to be removed so that it's automatic that items that need a lot more research and officer time are brought back to scrutiny committee. And I think we should take a vote on that this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you councillor Weir. Councillor Power, you had another comment?
It's a question, Chairman. I believe that we have agreed that the relevant performance reports will be published as part of the scrutiny papers so that we at least all members of scrutiny have sight of them. And I think we've also agreed that before commissioning further work, that should come back to scrutiny. And if the proposed changes from councillor Weir will achieve that, which I think they will, I'm happy to support that, those changes. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you councillor Power. Does anybody, oh, councillor Lumby, did you?
Yes. No, all on the same issue. And I'm sorry, are the terms of reference in our agenda pack? Can we see what five and six are? Do we know what we're voting on? I'm probably just being behind and stupid, not for the first time. But just saying, well, let's have a vote on taking out five and six. I don't know what five and six are, I haven't had a chance to look at that. I don't think we give me a situation where we're moving to a vote on something where we don't actually know fully what it is or have time to think about it. Now, I think if it's been sent around in advance, I'd be a bit happier. And I, the points in general that we've talked about, the idea that we thought see all the papers and if large bits of work is to be undertaken, that's for scrutiny. Neither of those things are, I think, are objectionable and I would be happy to minutes to record it. I'm not sure I'm happy to vote on a change to term of reference without seeing it or having a chance to think about it. That's all. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you councillor Lumby. councillor Horle? Councillor Horrell?
Chair, if I'm slightly shocked at the sort of assumption that, you know, the papers are not circulated. I think because of where we started in the process, we were completely out of cycle. And I think there's absolutely no doubt that all of the papers should be available for all councillors and whatever part of the cycle is appropriate for councillors at scrutiny, but also more broadly. And I think that's just a matter of ensuring that they are circulated appropriately. I'm slightly shocked that some of the panel members, when we discussed these issues at the recent meeting, didn't raise the issues they're raising tonight, that they don't think we should be addressing them and they should come back to scrutiny, which we could have, you know, easily actioned. And I think we did discuss the fact that we do not want to double up on work and make additional work for officers. We were very cognizant of that, which is why we said certain areas were being covered by the policy committees. And if we've been remiss and asked for flooding information to us rather than to scrutiny, I'm sure that we could ask you to put that on to the next agenda. I think the idea that we should seek approval, which would then probably delay anything coming to scrutiny for six months, is inappropriate. You've got a subcommittee who I think could make recommendations to you and the officer team when you put the agenda together. And hopefully, they can confirm whether they're able to address that. I'm surprised at the level of comment from members of the committee this evening when there has been no comment actually in the panel meeting itself. But it sounds to me as if we have some opportunities to enhance the process, which we should take on board and implement. And then should there be a need to change the terms of reference, we can bring that properly back to the next scrutiny committee for all to understand and comment on, which I think is the right procedural matter. Thank you.
I agree councillor Horrell. This evening, we won't be taking a vote on amending the terms of reference. It is indeed a new committee. The new subcommittee, should they feel that that would be appropriate, working alongside the officers. When the process is still being ironed out with regard to how it feeds back into scrutiny and absolutely, there's the opportunity for them to refer items back to the overall scrutiny panel. And the overall scrutiny panel absolutely takes ownership for the scrutiny that happens around this paper. So I will not be taking a vote on the terms of reference this evening. I agree that the papers are out there. If you'd like them included directly with the comments in this paper, then I'm sure that the officers would be happy to take that up as a comment. Councillor Hiscock, you had a comment?
Thank you, yes. I think one of my problems with the way that this has been developed is that it seems to exclude, I may be wrong, but it seems to exclude any sort of public scrutiny. When can the public comment or ask questions about the papers that are being considered by the panel?
Thank you councillor Hiscock. The public could have registered to speak this evening, as that was an item on the agenda. And they could have commented as they usually would have. Laura, you've come on to speak on that.
Yeah, certainly, certainly Chair. And obviously, the papers are then travelled onward to Cabinet, where there is public participation at that point. So if I might just try and assist a little bit. I understand all of the points that are being made. And I do think it's an early system. And I was just looking at the timetable there. And certainly, there's one more scrutiny in the agenda. And then there's another couple we know that are scheduled to take on some work that needs to be done. And I think there's a difference in the items that are shown on this list around ones where the panel is saying, let's understand a little bit more about this. And then that could be something that we did want to explore in more detail. And whether that went to one of the policy committees or came back to scrutiny, I think is a discussion between councillor Weir, councillor Clear and yourself councillor Brooke for best use. Because if I give the example, all of the work on recovery from the pandemic is also played through the policy committees. So we want to take it once to the best place for the best conversation. So I can certainly promise members that we will publish the papers. All members do have sight of them on modgov anyway. But unless you've signed up to that committee, you wouldn't get the flash for it. So we can certainly do that. We've had a recommendation, which I wholeheartedly agree, to just improve our performance pages. And we will certainly do that. And we can certainly release these papers along with this, which is a very brief note. I do give you that. But councillor Horrell has given an in-depth report on it. So members are cited and can cross check the pages. I think that's a little bit of an issue here. I think it would be quite difficult to move to change the terms of reference this evening, if I may, without that being in front of all members for consideration first. May I suggest we run the next cycle? We give a report back on that and we can print those terms of reference then. And it could be a discussion at that point, Chair?
Yes, thank you Laura. Councillor Weir, you wanted to speak again?
Sorry Chair, can I just jump in there? Councillor Bronk has indicated a while ago.
Okay councillor Bronk, we'll come to you and then we'll come back to councillor Weir again.
Okay, thank you very much. Comment was made that the performance panel hadn't raised any questions about our reporting. So as a participant of that panel, I just wanted to say that my understanding of the benefits of the panel was to go into the deep dive prior to the scrutiny committee in order for the oral account of what we looked at and the brief notes to be submitted to the scrutiny committee. And on that basis, if there were proposals to look at something in more depth, the scrutiny committee would be made aware of that on a timely basis and be in a position to say whether they endorsed that or whether there was another or a better way of dealing with that. So I think perhaps a number of us have had, you know, maybe slightly different understandings of, you know, the exact timeline and the extent of the powers of the performance panel. But my own was that it was just a forerunner and that all key decisions were going to be recommended to the scrutiny committee. And they would be in a position to take that, you know, sort of decision this evening. One thing that I was a bit disappointed about in terms of the performance panel, we were asked, and I think it's a good idea to put officers on notice if we're going to ask detailed questions. But having submitted my questions, I felt really that I was told at the start that the questions were noted and that written responses were going to be issued. And therefore, actually, I was told that there wasn't much benefit in having a discussion on those points at the performance panel. And that's just another thing that I think that we need to consider for next time round in order then to have the opportunity to talk about some of the issues of particular concern to somebody as we have the debate at this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Bronk for constructive comments. Councillor Weir?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm just coming back again because of the chief executive's comments. I have spent the whole day trying to find the papers for the performance panel on any of the publicly accessible sites. I am aware that a public document pack was issued to the panel. But there is no way of registering on modgov to access these papers. And therefore, we could not come to this meeting or a member of the public couldn't come to this meeting advised by those papers. I just wanted to make sure that people understood the papers are not published on modgov. And we can't trace back on the discussions. We can't link the discussions of that panel with what we're talking about this evening. It has been a very frustrating day trying to piece all of this together. Thank you.
Laura?
Thank you. Forgive me, I'm conscious I'm contributing in the debate session. But if you think it's helpful, Chair. Councillor Weir, thank you for that. First of all, our apologies. Please, please, please call if that's the issue. I think we are being just tripped up with that they are available to performance panel members. And all members were invited to join the performance panel cohort on mod.gov. But we will correct that overnight so that scrutiny and performance panel can see all of those papers. I do understand the issue is that, and that was the decision taken, it's a deep dive taken by the performance panel in advance of this meeting. And clearly, to have a useful conversation to which the public can see and hear this evening, we need to see those scrutiny papers tonight. So I think the simplest thing, just to help once more, Chair, if that's fine with you, is that we'll publish the notes as we have here. And we will indeed put the scrutiny, the quarterly papers on the website for this meeting because then it is in the public domain. But clearly, what you as chairman wished to avoid was actually the double conversation about performance. But councillor Has very erudite set that out in that if there was a matter of concern, that that would be raised in these notes and for the scrutiny committee to say, yes, please, we do want a briefing on flooding. When can we do that, please, chief executive? Can you set it up for next time? Or it goes to councillor Clear's committee? Or it goes to councillor Weir's committee as appropriate to the subject? So I think we're just still finding our way. But the biggest hurdle appears to be the visibility of that report. And we will fix that actually tomorrow, not overnight. So if that's okay.
Thank you. Thank you Laura. So we've had quite a lot of debate about the process and not an awful lot about the report that we saw before us. Is everybody happy to note the report? Councillor Horrell?
I just wanted to reiterate the point. I think it has been made, but all councillors were invited to attend the panel. That everyone was invited to attend. So it could be that not all councillors took up that opportunity, but everyone was invited to attend. So I just think we need to ensure that the issuing of documents and the invitations and the tying up of the various papers do flow through. Because there was absolutely no intention on any part of the panel for that to be difficult in any shape or form. And I just think that has been lost along the way and also the phasing of when this has started. But I do recall seeing the invitation for all councillors to the panel meeting, just so that that's on record, Chair.
Many thanks councillor Horrell. So on that, are we all agreed that we note this as a scrutiny committee? That we note the subcommittees?
Agreed.
Thank you.
Agreed.
Agreed. Thank you. Right, so we now move on to the scrutiny work programme for 2022 to 21. This is on pages 13 to 18. And it's just been noting regarding the scheduled February 2021 meeting, members are asked to note the additional agenda item. And the officers are suggesting to bring the date of the meeting forward one day to the second of February, which will enable the output from the meeting to be received by Cabinet. Do we have any questions on that?
Agreed. Agreed.
Agreed.
Councillor Horrell, Chair?
Councillor Horrell, was your hand still up? Or was that from the previous one? Oh, she's gone to meet Matthew, so that was a previous hand.
Thank you.
Okay, the final item for us this evening, the forward plan of key decisions again for noting is pages 297 to 302. For noting any questions on that? Do we agree to note that?
Agreed.
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 Perfect. Thank you very much. That concludes our formal business this evening. Thank you for attending. Stay well and I'll see you all soon.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Chad, thank you very much indeed.
Thank you.